Okay, it's six o'clock, so I'd like to call the meeting to order. Verify compliance with open meetings, allow notification, adopt the agenda. If you can all please stand for the pledge of the flag. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, no one registered to speak, so we'll move on to four gifts, donations, and recognitions. Do you have anything to that?
Yeah.
No?
No.
Okay, then move on to five consent agenda. A is approval of November vouchers and vouchers payable. B is approval of October 28th and November 11th, 2019, school board minutes. C is record of school safety drills. Would anyone like to remove an item?
Yes.
Okay, anyone else like to remove an item? Okay, then I'll take a motion to approve items five A and B.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing none, motion carries. Quinn, go ahead with five C.
Well, we have it on here. But not just to safety in general, but to our faculty.
Yeah, but we said we got to bring this to you. It's one, three, three, and she came out and said, you know, it's a safety initiative. What they've done before was that we discussed through the process that we were going to report session. This now is having the board approve the safety drills that we've done since the knowledge that safety drills are being done after this evaluation we've done by the principals, which is in accordance with that. So that will be assessed, which is more acknowledge these drills and its diversity, which is what we're doing. Which is why we're helping one through. We are concerned about the safety issues. Let's go.
Okay, anyone else? I'll take a motion to approve five C. Second?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing none, motion carries. Move on to six action items. A is the Whitno High School cafeteria. A is cafeteria model and scope. I'll take a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second? Okay, any comments, questions, discussion?
I, I guess I'm not really sure. I, Mike, I read your email. I'm still not really sure. It sounds like voting on this is, is not a vote to, to kind of explore and finalize and see elevations and, you know, plans and that kind of thing. But it's, it's like the first vote to, to say that, yes, we're doing it. And I'm not, that's not, I, usually we see more than that prior to committing to a project. So I can't commit to something that I don't know what we're getting and logistically how it will work out with the space. And as, as you know, the last couple of meetings on this, there was a lot of thought, theory, and speculation as to how they, or what they plan on doing, or how they might work the student flow and that kind of stuff. But, but it was still, I mean, even, not even one theory. So I'm just not comfortable with where we are. I mean, how is this different from what we've done in the past?
I would say it's very much the same as the referendum process. We had a dollar amount that was put out there. We had ideas of what we wanted to accomplish. And that's, in the end, the dollar amount was approved with rough sketches and drawings about what we wanted to touch in each of the areas of the schools. Then after the referendum was approved, that's then when the board would begin further updates on the core financing things and what, you know, modeling what the areas would look like, along with bid packages that were actually brought to the board and approved. So in scopes that are this large, we're trying to mirror the same process that the referendum took. The referendum required board approval here at your aftermath, in essence, the community, representing the community in this particular vote. So that's what we're trying to mirror with this particular project.
It just seemed like we had a little bit better developed elevations and plans and, and, and I, more of a definite idea of, of how we were fixing the problems that we were trying to fix and that kind of stuff, rather than, rather than this.
Yeah, and I'd say the only difference, John, is that with the referendum, because it was a larger project, we did engage in architects prior to the referendum casting. So we decided, as the, the board decided that they would pay that architectural fee regardless of the referendum passed or not, and that was a cost they decided to incur. And let the voters decide. So that would be the difference. And so you probably did have a few more drawings that we decided that we were gonna take the architect fees in order to get that. In this case, because it's a much smaller project and the cost of the architects, I mean, and they know part of it, we've gotten some, but they probably aren't as developed. But we didn't engage in architects' service up until this point. That's the difference, I would say, in the parallels that Mike was talking about.
So what I can say is this, this, the steps after this, as far as the fee structures and that kind of stuff, you know, I think that, isn't that coming up here?
Yeah, items two.
Yeah, so, I mean, that's, obviously it's a separate issue, and I'll, I'll speak to that then. But, but as far as this goes, this is still over two and a half million dollars. And I can't see, I, I mean, personally, I would rather have a more developed idea as to what we're saying to go ahead with and spend the over two and a half million dollars before I would say I'm willing to spend the over two and a half million dollars. So last time, yeah, it was more money, but we had more of a firmed up idea of what things would look like and, and how we were planning on, on executing and all that kind of stuff. This, this time, without the architect, I mean, I'd rather pay the fee and see, and work with the architect to come up with something that, that we'd be willing to spend the money on, rather than approve the project now and then see what they come up with, because that takes, that takes it out of our hands.
Yeah, I would say the only difference, because we didn't have a lot of the stuff like finishes and all of that, that came afterwards. The only thing you wouldn't have had is maybe a 3D rendering of it. Because all of the details that we did with even the spaces changed after the referendum, that work happened in the summer and fall, prior to hiring a construction company. So that would be the only difference, is we had what I would call renderings, probably for the purposes of referendum communication. And that's, that's really the only difference. They were just renderings.
Well, I understand that. I just, okay, so maybe not referendum communication, but board communication, from my level of, of seeing what we're trying to spend the money on, I would rather have engaged in some architect development, rather than spending the money on an idea that isn't really developed yet. It's, I don't know, I just think that it's, it's too soon to vote to go ahead on a project.
Yeah, so I was going to add that I had a question before the meeting, and I talked with Jonathan on the phone. And the one thing that I want to make sure that I'm clear on, because what it says here for the board consideration or action is recommendation to approve the remodel of the high school cafeteria, courtyard, and former student special services area, at a cost not to exceed the cost listed. And so for me, when I'm looking at the saying, recommendation to approve, it reads to me in the document, like, we are approving the whole thing. Now, when I had the conversation and when I looked at the other emails and things like that, it sounds like this is a preliminary approval, and there will be other approvals coming down the line? Is that correct?
Board policy states that purchases, like purchases that are greater than $25,000 would have to come to the board. Anything above $50,000 has to be in a competitive bid, meaning the board have to approve that as well. So that those bid packages that CG Schmidt would go work on, their subcontractors and gather that work together, the board would incrementally see those pieces, let's call it between February, March, April, as the project take, probably February would be likely, as a project takes scope. So you would see those bid packages at that time, the board could potentially say, that's too high, or that's not what we need to do, or that's, whatever the case is. The bid packages come across at that particular time. This gives us something that says, hey, why aren't we engaging the CG Schmidt and Bray Architects who are engaging for this purpose? That there is a project that the board has a reasonable expectation that you do want this project accomplished and done. There's clearly work that needs to be done in the cafeteria and in the special services space that ever is going to be used. So all that is taken into consideration with this initial proposal.
So, but with the bid packages, it's not like we're about to, while construction's ongoing, it's not like we're about to turn a bid package down because they're in the middle of the project, right? I mean, we have that option, but where would that leave us?
In this instance, it's probably small enough, Todd, you can say anything else you want on this, but it would probably be one entire bid package at once. So much with the referendum where it was different building, $16 million, multiple, five different bid packages that came through, this would probably come as one bid package, because the scope was so small, small.
I'm comfortable with what has been presented to us. I feel they put out a good plan to us. Are all the, are all the X's and O's there? No. I'm not an expert. I'm not an architect, and I'm not a general contractor. So those things are gonna have to be settled out. We're betting, we're voting on a, on a framework of 2.6 million, wherever it is, that, that we are allowing that work to happen. It's needed. Let's move on. Take it, I mean, I, I get your, your, your point of view, but let's go into a vote, and if it doesn't, if it passes, it passes. If it doesn't, then, then, there you go.
The only other thing I would add, the difference with the referendum is that we did a survey with our voters to see where that tolerance was of what they, you know, would tolerate. The board is serving in that capacity. I don't know how to move forward without a benchmark of the amount of dollars that we can move toward the project. That's the difference. But you sort of have to have a basic amount of dollars to know where, where you're working within. So I guess the question is, if that amount is not okay, then, I mean, that's, that's the project in and of itself. We've done prelim work on it. So that's how can we arrive at, you know, progress forward.
So back to the question that I had, is, is this a final approval, yes or no?
Final approval on?
The dollar amount and the, that the project is happening.
We said that 2.6 million is acceptable scope project.
But are we are not 100% committed to the project at this point in time? Or are we 100% committed to the project if we pass this tonight?
We need to be committed to further engagement conversations, which is why I'm to agree with CG Schmidt and Bray Architects. We are gonna work with the 2.6 million dollar scope. You're gonna see bid packages again in February. As much information as you got during the referendum, that's what we get during this process.
Yeah, apparently, so, I mean, once, once you have the renderings, if I come back to the referendum, we'll be able to see them.
Yeah, of course.
Okay, so, so to that point, once they have a rendering, they'll come back to the board, we'll be able to review it. And then, like you said, as we move forward, we, if a big package comes up and the board is not satisfied with a direction or a design or a plan, they can go to not approve that big package to make a change. Right? Does that answer your question?
There's only one big package, so just one big package. We'll sit down.
Karen, I think to your, to your question, yes. In my opinion, that's what we are voting.
That we're committing, that...
And if we're moving forward, that's, that's the top of the budget.
Right.
Okay, and that was...
Correct, that's the top of the budget, that's a good way to put it, that's the top of the budget.
My only reservation with this is that I think that I at least have some expectations for the functionality that's gonna come out of this. And so my only hangup is gonna be, is if that functionality, after, so the review and design and whatnot, it looks like that functionality that we're hoping for isn't going to be there, then, then I, I don't know. You know what I mean? So...
I get it.
Well, at that point, I would think then you, you vote down the bid package when it comes to for us, because you don't like the scope for the building. But that bid package is gonna come forward, it's not gonna exceed the dollar amount that we're voting on tonight.
That helps, thank you.
Yeah, okay, good. Okay. Anybody else? Okay, then all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. On to two, fee proposal, construction firm, I'll take a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, comments, discussion?
Universal level of instruction, like how we're practicing, how we're teaching across the board for all of our kids, best practice related. And then the other things would be, we've done a couple of things intentionally as far as interventions in both sixth, seventh, in sixth, seventh and eighth grade in math, as well as extensions in both sixth, seventh and eighth grade in math and reading. So, do you maybe want to talk about double dose at all? Double dose is one of the things we've done specifically in math.
Sure, we highlighted, if you can think about the double diamond, right, or the diamond, kind of looking at the students that fall on both ends of it and how do we service those, that population of students with an extra support class. And that meets twice a day during their, or twice a week during their connect time in lieu of, so they still get a part of other connect activities, but twice a week that they're receiving additional contact point with the math instructor.
Last year we tried that with just our eighth grade, I'd say about in like December, January. And we saw some pretty good internal data shifts with that, using our STAR assessment to kind of measure where our kids are at, as well as some internal measures as far as where they were going with that. We saw kids really grow in that small cluster. And so we tried to try to replicate that a little bit in sixth, seventh and eighth grade this year. Additionally then, we also have kind of done the same thing with reading and having a reading extension for kids. So if they're in ELA on one, or in math on one day, they do have an opportunity to either opt in or out per parent request for, as far as getting like that extra support in ELA too, on those other days. So Katie has worked with our teams on that, anything you would like to add?
The teachers who are offering support and extension are, they're kind of giving kids choice in regards of if they want to kind of be pushed in reading and/or writing. So sixth grade teacher kind of has a choice board and those students are able to pick areas of interest and then she pushes them. Seventh grade is similar, looks a little bit different, it's more of a menu option. And then eighth grade, she's trying to prepare them more for high school, so she's working on some specific reading and writing skills in the extension core.
Teachers in ELA and math that are not doing the extensions are doing specific interventions with kids. So they have a much smaller section of kids that they support, but we are doing interventions in reading and math for like our lowest non-special education population group of kids in most times. In addition to that, as a cross-board ELA and math, we looked at our data and we kind of broke it down. And we tried to figure out what were some areas we could intentionally go after pretty quickly. And we have some areas that we can grow and you've looked at it, we've done, we've broken it down. And some of the easier ones to look at is, we did find some scope and sequence pieces that we need to maybe review in math and look at when things are being taught. And Janelle has taken our math group with Erin and Blake as well to kind of work, and we did that last week to look at. There are some standards that we teach that happen after we assess our students. And so we don't want to necessarily just teach to the task, we want to make sure our kids have had experiences to be successful, as opposed to taking things blindly. So you led our groups through that work, we started that work last week, so.
Yeah, sure, so what we did is, you know, I think after, you know, several or a couple of years of using the curriculum, their curriculum resource connected to math, teachers have kind of said, yeah, I think, you know, maybe we're not hitting this as hard as we need to and, you know, do we go in depth enough here? And so what we really did is we took our assessment items and, because what we assess is what we're teaching. And we did, we made a continuum six, eight. We put, we put all of our items up here by standard and by depth of questioning, right? So the depth of which we're covering it. And we did, we found some areas where we need to hit harder. So we, and we also found some areas that we're not assessing until after the board, we're not, we're not even getting to. So, for instance, statistics and probability is the last unit in sixth and seventh grade. And we teach that every day. And that's sixth and seventh, so if you, you know, so that's an easy fix, right? We can, we can shift some things around and make sure that kids have access to that before the board. There are some other pieces too where, you know, we've identified some other areas, some other standards we're not, we're not hitting as hard as we need to. And so we actually, next, the week we get back from Thanksgiving break, I'm going to be sitting down with each grade level at a half day and creating some action items around that. So are we going to create a mini-unit? Is this a standalone lesson that we can build in? Are there a couple of different tasks that we can put together that can give exposure to some things that, you know, we need to?
When we broke apart the math data, there's two areas that just jumped out at us, statistics and probability and equations and expressions. And those are both two things that we do not have a good scope, our scope and sequence doesn't match when we're assessing them is probably the right way to phrase that. So that was part of this process with Janelle. And we did the same thing in ELA and we found a couple of, like, I would say more structural things that we can put in place, that we can teach our kids, that will help us move forward in that area too. Do you want to talk to those at all?
Sure, so two action items that we've kind of put into ELA, cross-curricular. So in every content, we're going to focus on a constructed response, so the building blocks of a short answer, what all students should have in short answers, whether it's in science or social studies. So we're rolling out a protocol for our students to follow, using a very common format that many ELA teachers use, but we are going to start using it cross-curricularly. It's just referred to as RACE, R A C E, it's an acronym. Restate the question, answer the question, cite evidence and explain. So if we follow that protocol in all of our content areas, hopefully we'll see an upswing. And then another area that we need to focus in on is text-dependent analysis on the forward. So students are asked to read numerous passages and then they're given a prompt and they are told to write an essay. And it's not that we don't teach writing, we may not be very mindful of the same verbiage that is on forward. And then our students are scoring a 20th percentile for the text-dependent analysis essay for proficiency. So what we thought would be a great plan was to make sure that we're teaching a mini-analyse, or a text-dependent analysis unit, January, February-ish, and then we'll do a review before forward. So, for instance, an example, if students are scored a two if they do not separate their paragraphs. So if they don't have a separate introduction paragraph, supporting paragraph and conclusion, if they put it into one paragraph, they're already given a two. So we need to be mindful and give our kids that experience to make sure that they can take that skill taught in the anal, or the text-dependent analysis unit and then transfer it over to the forward exam. So they'll do a mini-unit, two to three-week unit in January, February, and then a review right before forward.
So we looked around a little bit and kind of acted like, I guess like our boundary comparables and just to get ideas on what other people were doing. And just kind of taking a look at what we could do immediately so we can act and change between now and this morning. That would also just benefit our kids' learning in general. We also put some things in place that would be good across the board and also help us.
I have a question. So are you, are you working with the elementary to make sure that fifth grade, when they end, when they end fifth grade, that they're prepared to take the sixth grade and then further on, eighth going to ninth?
Just had a conversation with Molly Fairback, the literacy coach at elementary at Edgerton. And she and I are working on making sure we're using similar formatting in the assessment unit for, they do do one in fifth grade. So just making sure that we're aligning all of our resources so that students are seeing similar things in fifth and not sixth.
In our HCE in Edgerton?
Yep, Molly's going to, yep, she's going to organize both.
Not a part of our math time, our bringing this dialogue with us, we have that voice on the coaching side. At least be able to go, hey, I don't know, never taught the kids number five, our kids know it, oh, I won't be teaching number five here, here. Okay, perfect, how do we use a couple of great terms of our staffs? It's not that we haven't maybe taught some of our kids, but how we reactivate some of that knowledge that they've already had so they can apply it as a sixth grader or seventh grader.
Thank you.
High school.
High school, so. Thank you Blake. So at, at the high school, we've, we've had a lot of work around some changes to our curriculum. So I'll, I'll start specifically with math. And as you've heard in the past couple of years, we have had some switches in our scope and sequence. So the times that we teach certain math courses. We've also, looking at our math data, you know, one of the data points that we looked at was UW Systems provides a report of students that need to take remedial math when they get to a UW system school. And we're not happy with that data. We're also not happy with where our math performance has been in regards to the ACT and the ACT aspire suites. One of the pieces that we've seen in particular is that the curriculum that we've had has been kind of a build-your-own curriculum and really has not aligned to the curriculum adoption that the middle school and elementaries have had. And Erin can speak to any of that, that history. So that's been a, a big push that we've had here. So Blake, if you want to share in?
Yeah, sure, so, yeah, the, the curriculum we adopted, it allows us to go into, you know, collaborative student teams and engage in some real problem solving, which has been really, really fun for, for us to kind of facilitate as teachers. And it allows, you know, people like me and Nancy Sarno to kind of dig in on instructional methods with teachers to help them, you know, kind of encourage this, this problem solving and this team, team building kind of stuff. It's problem-based learning, we're looking at real-world stuff, we are digging into problems that are relevant. We're not looking at just expressions and equations out of context. We're doing some real, real work with understanding.
Can you give us one?
Like right now, off the top of my head, sure. So recently, we did an activity where we were working with, doing some identifying heights of things. And so we would go outside and we said, you know, standing here, we know the distance from here to there is some amount, right? Thirty-seven yards or whatever it is. And then we would, you know, use the Pythagorean theorem to find how, how tall a light post was, which is kind of a surveying technique. So you'd have to take from your eye level and calculate that in and subtract that away from the height and figure out those kinds of things. So these are fun activities for kids to do, but they also have a mathematical connection that then relates into real-world stuff. So it's kind of fun. The, yeah, no problem. The other thing that this new curriculum lets us do is it allows us to have mixed space practice involved in, in what we're doing. And what that means is, when kids get homework, they see stuff from the past, not just from our course, but also like Algebra I. So if we're in geometry, see Algebra I stuff and extend there. And they get more practice that way. And it spaces out throughout each unit and we assess those things as well. And it's really given kids a lot more confidence in knowing that they get a good opportunity to practice things before they get assessed. That's the curriculum.
So additionally, we've kind of taken a page from the middle school book in terms of some of that double dosing. As we proposed a math extension course. So it's a course for ninth and 10th grade students, offers that ability to have some of that pre-teaching, that re-teaching, that assistance. It's not truly just homework help, they're actually teaching lessons in there. They receive a half credit for that for one of the semesters. We have about sixty students between the roughly four hundred and twenty ninth and 10th graders. So a fair number of students that we are working with to try to either maintain where they're at or provide them that additional support to move forward on. So that's another math component that we've got. Moving on to then, English, well, one, one thing with math. Math, we, we have this kind of roll-up process here. So as you saw in previous board meetings, we proposed curriculum changes and scope and sequence changes over the next couple of years. And so right now, as Blake is kind of referring to some curriculum pieces, that's specifically in the geometry classes right now, as we flip-flopped the way students take their, their courses. Previously it had been, students took Algebra I and then jumped into Algebra II and then geometry. Similar to the middle school, they weren't getting the geometry concepts that they needed by the time they took the aspire tests, freshmen and sophomores of the year. So flip-flopping that and also kind of rolling things up so that by the time they get to that junior year, they're all able to take some of those additional survey type courses. And so that will be rolling up and coming shortly here. In terms of English, language arts, we've spent a lot of time focusing on that as well. You know, in, in that in particular, when we look at our sub-scores for ACT and ACT aspire, our reading sub-score has been the lowest sub-score. And that is partly due to the fact that our curriculum has been designed with some intentionality around focusing on those English things, grammar, punctuation, things like that. And we needed to kind of shift our teachers into becoming more reading teachers and changing up how we went about that way. So Rachel, if you would like to share kind of the changes that we've seen there?
Sure, so we've been really working hard on implementing the workshop model in the classroom. And that allows teachers to have more time with individual students, group, smaller groups, so they can really work on those skills. The reading strategies that we really focus on. We moved away from whole-class novels to offer more choice for students with a diverse perspective, really some more interesting and engaging literature there. We're finding that this is really building a stronger reader. Freshman Academy instituted it last year and it worked really great. And it's really spreading out now throughout the other grades. The 10th grade actually commented on the freshman academy. And the student that they're getting now in 10th grade is a student that is ready to collaborate, has no problems being in a group, has no problem presenting. One of the 10th grade teachers told me, it's like a totally new, new student we have. Like just really exciting to teach and it's really challenging her to keep going deeper with that. So that's really exciting. Also, I have a 12th grade teacher that said, I used to take my kids to the library and say, okay, we've got to check out a book. And they'd say, oh, we have to check out a book. And now she takes them to the library and she says, okay, time to check out a book. And they say, just one book? So that's super exciting, that's the culture we really wanted to get going there. We also, should I just keep going?
Well, sure, so.
Otherwise I could snap it, I was going to go into text complexity.
Yeah, so, so with text complexity, one of the pieces that we've noticed with some of the data is that, you know, our students have good fluency. They can read a passage and they can sound out the words and they can, you know, they can read it. When you ask them some more comprehension questions, especially if it's a non-fiction complex text, they, they, they're lost. And this is a skill that we see translating into all the disciplines, especially as the students get older and move on into AP level courses. So if you want to kind of speak to what we've done around that?
And that has been a lower area for us that we wanted to really focus on this year in bumping that up. With text complexity, the way really to, to increase that is offering multiple texts and different types of texts. So we add nine, non-fiction, they're reading articles, they're reading textbook examples, they're reading source documents like Frederick Douglass Freedom Papers. And then they have to compare two or three papers and then synthesize that into writing. So we're, we're really pushing that this year.
Additionally, vocabulary is a focus this year. We, we found that the higher vocabulary students have, the better off they actually do, it's shocking. So there's been a little bit of intentionality around that as well. In English department, there are some folks who have their SLOs around vocabulary. If you want to also speak to some of the other pieces that you're doing with that.
So when a student takes a standardized test, a lot of times it's not just guessing the definition of the word at the high school level, it's really understanding the word in context with other words and how it interacts with other words. So teachers now this year are really focusing on strategies that help kids decipher those words if it's an unknown word. So they're teaching Greek and Latin words, because there's roots, because they're so often in so many of the words we use. And also teaching them context clues. And if they see an unknown word, how do you look around it? What are those kind of strategies for them?
The, the other piece that happens in English class in particular, but also in many of our other classes, is, is really that, that writing piece. And literacy goes hand-in-hand with reading and writing. Our, our focus, previous years, has been around doing a lot of research papers and speeches and having a 10-page paper to prepare kids for college. But that's not exactly what's assessed on the ACT. On the ACT, they don't ask you to spend days researching a paper and making 10 pages citing those examples. So we've, we've started to do a few other intentional things around writing to build up some of that stamina for, for the tests.
Just like Janelle said, at the middle school where they took a look at their curriculum and, and what was being taught was after a test was taken. So you kind of missed the boat on that. We took a look at that too in the high school English department and we noticed that we needed to move some things at the beginning of our semesters and that was writing and timed writing specifically, where you're given a short amount of time and kids have to produce an on-demand full, good piece of writing. So the teachers have really developed strategies this year to teach kids how they can really budget their time out the best way on a timed writing. And then they've given them practice, more practice in class doing this.
So are you, you said that you were going to change it, the 10-page essay, you're, because it's not?
Well, that, that's not our sole focus.
Because I, I can tell you, my daughter graduated last year and she's at Madison. And just last week, her and her mom went over one, which was 30% of her grade.
Sure, absolutely.
So are we still, are we still?
Oh, yes, we've just now really intentionally included timed writing as well. So they're still getting all types of writing across the board. In 10th grade specifically, that's one area we wanted to add additionally, timed writing. Because they're intent, they're also still doing speeches and.
Other questions?
Yeah, I just want to ask about the grammar, punctuation and spelling. So, because that is something that is included on the ACT test. You know, they'll show you a sentence and say, okay, no change, or does the comma go here, or does the circle go here, how do these parts agree? Those types of things. So when I, or your grammar, punctuation and spelling, the, like, how, how is that in your business?
Well, so, teaching in isolation is not best practice. Integrating it within the reading and writing skills that you're already teaching is best practice. And so that, that still exists, we still have students who, you know, as they're writing, they have to have things proofread and peer edited and come back and, yep, learn how to properly write.
And do kids still get that part of the paper, but, you know? This is a run of sentence, you need a semicolon here, you know, this, how does that handle at a middle school?
So what's really nice with the workshop model is that can be handled individual, one-on-one with a student who really needs that work or with a group of students that are really struggling with commas. So teachers can personalize their grammar instruction one-on-one throughout the day. They can give a little mini lesson and it'll most likely be tied into something written that the teacher's written or that is an article out there as used like kind of a guide or a mentor. And then if, while kids practice that skill, teachers then can sit with them one-on-one or as a group and keep practicing it and then ask for it in their paper and comment on that as well. Yes, yep.
I can specifically work with her on what her. And then meet you where you are. So not all of our learners, so I've kind of seen all gamuts, this is my 16-year in education where it was, it did used to be taught in isolation, but being able to be a better, working with students one-on-one, so we're meeting kids where they are at, I think is more powerful. And then they're being able to transfer, transfer right to the writing pieces that they're working on.
So at what point do you start working with kids on, because, because long before kids are, are writing and being evaluated on situation they're speaking in? So at what point do you work with kids on their, like, verbal, verbal grammar skills and stuff like that? For example, I hear it's been an epidemic of, of society saying me and her, you know? And I hear that, it's just like nails on a chalkboard to me. And I hear that at all ages, from little kids in our schools to adults where I work. So, you know, at what point do you start working with kids to try to shape grammar towards a, at least verbally towards a proper direction? Because as I told my son, if you, if you speak properly, it gets easier to write properly. At least that's how I feel about it. So are we working on that at, at early?
I'd say me and cheese. I would say almost every.
I had to.
You didn't let me down.
I would say almost every class that has some form of collaboration going on it, there are structures put into it. So when we respond, like in a science class, this is how we interact, here's the prompts that we can ask each other. So we provide them with some of those stepping stones along the way until they can kind of articulate it on their own. So I can think of most of our core areas in particular and a few of the special areas that I teach specifically, like, I'll draw a blank, what they're called, almost like the talk strategies, the sentence sounds and talk strategies they use as they're kind of going through that. So they have some of those building blocks in various areas. So it might be specifically talking like a scientist or like a historian or even as an artist or something like that. But I know we are trying to build that in. And the kids are given quite a bit of time, especially in, in all levels, but in our, I was talking mind in particular, ours in particular. They're so social as it is that we need to teach them how to interact and have those conversations. So I'd say every class, whether it's ELA or not, they have those opportunities to not use cheese or he's or we's in the wrong ways.
So I mean, to me, there, there doesn't need to be a formal approach to it, it's consistency. You know, it's like, it's like, well, I mean, just consistency. It doesn't matter if you're having a, a lesson in math in third grade, you know, if the proper grammar's being used in either direction. So I was wondering if that's anything that you guys are?
I mean, now that as you see more and more of like, kids like, like code switching, like professional talk or school talk versus like, ex-talk or home talk or friend talk. And there are some kids who just do it naturally and pick up on that. And then you have more and more kids that you have to, maybe how you talk at home, but when we're in a math class or a school, we have the reason to talk just to help them understand the difference.
So we're watching that, that they can just.
I'm very pleased, I find it very heartwarming that you guys have taken such a large scope to focus on so many different problems and kind of limit it down and come up with multiple strategies to attack this. I think that's probably going to be the way that you're going to see the most success and probably see it come around very quickly.
I was going to say, I agree, I feel about it, at first I'm feeling like, oh, are we teaching to the test? But as you guys explained it, the way you're presenting it, I feel like, did I just say you guys? The way all of you are presenting.
Well, you were just, you were just quoting Dr. Boots, so you're good.
The way all of you are presenting it.
Attractions for days.
It gave me more confidence that this is going deeper than that. And I appreciate the details as you've explained it, it gives me a, I, I feel like we got some good insight into what you're working on.
Karen, that's a great time because I wanted to recognize the work that they're doing because you don't always get to see it. And some of us are privileged enough to be able to see this. In fact, we had a meeting, we were visiting Lori. And Blake and Erin and Janelle were working with the six middle school math teachers intensely next door. And Lynn came, she said, you've got to go and see them. And I love math anyway, which I say that because I do. And they were, I mean, it was some serious math discussions and really, and really the level and intensity of what they were working on was just, it was, it was really good to see. So they, we get to see this and, and I think it was important for you to hear the depth of work that they're working on, to know how serious and passionate they are about that and bringing that forward. So that was, that was the goal tonight, to be able to give you an insight into just some of the stuff that's happening in, in the schools right now.
I was going to add, Charlie and I aside, you have some really smart people here. And you know, it's really, it's nice to be able to.
He's smart.
Have you, this is just kind of a quandary question, but have you seen a shift as far as English and language arts goes, as far as presentation skills? Because I will say the one thing I've noticed throughout my career is just how nervous and how freaked out people get by having to present. And it's just, it's something you have to do at pretty much every job and every level you're at. And I think it's, it's an, it's an undervalued skill it seems because I present for a living. I do interviews, do group things all the time. There's people that I work with that do the same thing. There's people that I work with that do the same thing, that have to psych themselves up to be able to do it, and it's just not there.
You know, what's interesting is in the, the stuff we're doing right now, I'm seeing the kids working in teams, and then just reading about their conversation, making it up, amazing kids. And being the people that are the experts, really, to being able to, to present and talk about stuff.
Yeah.
And I think that that's, like, the fact that there's so much focus at both ELS and math on collaborative work is, it balances off each other.
Yeah.
It works really well, and kids are, I think, you know, showing that.
One example in social studies, that the middle school right now, the entire department is working on Socratic seminars. So, it's an opportunity for students just to be prepared to argue their points.
Good.
And sixth, seventh, and eighth grade are all working on one right now, all in different phases. Seventh grade will be the first one presenting. But we're working on a planning tool to help students be better prepared to voice their opinion, and having some evidence to support their thinking, and then being prepared to argue someone else's viewpoint. So, I think the strategies that they're embedding in other content areas are helping, providing students with opportunities to be collaborative and to share their thinking out loud. Sometimes, students are, I think it's a maturity level as well.
Yeah.
Some feel more comfortable speaking in front, just like adults, while, while others are, you know, more eager to sit in the back. So, I think those opportunities that are being provided help give kids the experience.
Awesome.
Last year, we wrote into the freshman academy their assessments, we wrote in a speaking and listening piece to each assessment. So, the kids had to formally or informally present interdisciplinary paper or presentation. So, it gave them a lot of practice, and at the end of the year, then they had a number of formal, end of the year presentation where they presented to each other their own individual year. And then, vote rated to 10, which we do four different genres of speeches, and they go up and they practice, and they use note cards, and the teachers, they can go in to be aware of your garments and what you're wearing, your body movements, eye contact, all those things, so we do get that in that state.
Awesome. Can I piggyback off of that with my experience last year? So, obviously, my son was in freshman academy last year, and he doesn't like talking in front of groups at the beginning, and he's like, I have to talk? What do I do? Wait, no, 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 this isn't, all worried. And to the end of the year, and even to this year, he's like, I have a speech. Like, okay, on what? He's like, no, it's on this. You feel okay? I'm good. Okay, you want to run it by me? Not really. But, but that's great, but then, on the other end, talking about, just what you're saying with the, the depth and the level and the engagement, right? So, I know in one class, they have to, they're assigned what side of the aisle, kind of like what talk shows on in sports, right, where one guy has to be one side of it, right? And the conversation of, I don't agree with the side I have to defend, how do I do it? So, it's an important skill to learn that you don't want to offend somebody, you can say, look, I have to do this, but be mindful of attacking or defending an idea and not attacking the person. So, I mean, we never had those conversations before, but now to have that, so I can see the evolution, and it's really challenging them to think outside the box and preparing them for what you were saying, being able to do that later. And I'll tell you, the freshman academy experience from last year, this has been incredible, to see how much more comfortable he is, and he's not afraid to be in front of people, and it's great. Your life exactly.
So, I guess the question we should always be asked, and this is not a question that we have to answer tonight, but how are we going to measure the progress and how are we going to measure our results? Maybe, I know that we have the ACT scores, and we have the ACTs, and I know we have the state tests and whatnot, but how are you going to kind of see how things are going? What should we expect?
For our constructive responses in the Text Dependent Analysis Unit, we're going to take time as a team to norm with the teachers, just to see where students are. So, for example, sixth grade gave a constructive response prompt without teaching that format, the RACE format. So, they have some preliminary data to look at, to see where students were beforehand, and then after Thanksgiving break, they're rolling out the strategy, so then we can see how students are growing after we continuously use that. And then, that's kind of what we're doing in all of the comments here.
Ultimately, I would say we rely heavily on our teachers to be able to share their experiences of if it's getting better in the short run. Yes, obviously, ACT Aspire and ACT scores will tell us a story, but having those conversations, and especially for the two of them as coaches, they're, they're embedded deeply with the teachers and be able to have those, those conversations about, you know, if we give a good, honest try on this, and if it worked, or if we didn't really try it as well as we should have, and we need to kind of go back to supporting the teacher on how, how to make it happen.
We get a lot of, we get a lot of focus on macro data from everything, right, from from the school report cards to ACTs to PW and CHS and everything. And once we start really getting, you know, ingrained in some of this universal instruction, I think the micro data from our kids and even that is really important.
I think it really changes the tone and nature of, like, parent-teacher conferences and that engagement, it's a much richer conversation of not, here's what they scored, they just need to study this, right? It's, okay, here's what I'm seeing in class, here's what they need to work on, here's what we're talking about, here's why they need to improve that, here's why they're getting this, and if they just tweak this thing, right? It's a richer conversation where you can go home and say, okay, you bombed that test, but these are the, these are the actions, or these are the skills you need to work on, so that you don't run into this problem again. It's, I found that during these parent-teacher conferences too, and it's nice. I mean, you can see the evolution going into what you're saying to us, experiencing on the other end, it's great, it's working, it's very good. So, thank you for all your work. Anybody else?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, on to BWASB Fall Workshop, and we can do C SWSA report.
Oh, boy, lucky me. So, I went, Lisa was there as well, we both went to the workshop prior, and the workshop was on teacher retention and compensation.
Yeah, compensation.
And I really can't tell you what transpired, but I had, I had about six questions that I got from the presentation, and I, I wish I had those questions, but Lisa and I talked about them, and we are doing them in one form or another, it might be called a little something different or something, but, which was really good, it was helpful. And then we had, we had dinner, and then we had a speaker, the government liaison for WSAB. Because I go to SWSA, it really was the same report. We have a, we have a lobbyist that keeps us up to date on all the bills that are going on. So, it was really, heard it than where they're at, where they are right now. And then we heard from the executive director, John Ashley, and we heard they had awards, and we called it a night. SWSA, this past month, we did, we heard from our lobbyist about what bills are in front of the governor, or what were in the legislative, legislative body. Some of them got passed, one was vetoed recently, I think there was four that were passed, and one was vetoed. That took up most of the time, did we, we didn't work on our, our six...
No, she showed us the tool, the spreadsheets where you can go and how to contact your legislators and all of that.
So, I will say, so, in January, the, the January meeting, we have, we're having the state superintendent there, Carolyn Stanford, Stafford.
Stanford Cannon.
And if anybody would like to go, you're more than welcome. Meeting is, that starts at 7:30, let Lisa or I know, and you're more than welcome to listen. And in the February meeting, we're supposed to have Representative Robin Boss or a, or a standard. So, those are two heavy, heavyweights in our system, so if you'd like to go, let me know, let Lisa know, and make sure we have room for you. That's all.
Just a reminder that the, we talked to Kathy, if you're interested in attending the convention, January, the schedule, they're starting to release some of the names of the presentations and everything, so you can start looking at that. I don't think the app is available yet, but reach out to Kathy if you're interested in attending. Okay, on to D, School Board PTO and Liaison Reports.
I don't think there was much new with the Park and Rec Board. They gave some reports from this last summer, and all of their classes and activities are all increasing in numbers. Talked a little bit again about the skating rink, which, with the weather, was probably going to open a little bit earlier, so I think it was December 16, something around there, at, that's at Calco Park. And then, I already talked to Lisa about this, but there seems to be some, a little bit of a disconnect in Whitnell's information getting to the Park and Rec Board for the Recreator and different things like that. So, I know Lisa was going to reach out to Renee and see why that's happening, so, that's about it.
I did attend the meeting a couple Thursdays ago. I think the big thing that was really hit home was that we have quite a few members of the executive committee that are moving out to middle school. And with those people, they not only hold secretary or treasurer or president, whatever it is, they also do a lot of, of the committee work as well. And so, we're going to need a huge influx of new people. Hopefully, they do good work, and like any organization, that, you know, 10% of the people volunteer, and those 10% put their hands up for multiple spots. So, hopefully, we can get a new flux of parents that are going to be, that are earlier in their Edgerton experience, and can stay for a couple years and keep it going.
Hey, music boosters, the concerts are all the first week of December this year. I believe they're like on Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, so kind of like all in a row. And the Falcon Boosters, I haven't, I didn't go to last month's meeting, but the next one's coming up in the next week, so.
HCE met last week. They've had a lot of events happen, and they've got some upcoming things. Second and third grade concerts are next week, and the end of next week as well will be movie night, that's on Friday the 6th, 7 to 9. It's Toy Story 4, you can also win a copy of Toy Story 4 and win the raffle. I found out we got robbed in this whole mod pizza thing, so it was between...
Oh, no.
Yeah, we got robbed.
Chris, get him, get him.
It was, it's kind of a conflict for me since I'm, as an alum of EES, you know, there, but we got, HCE got a Monday, and their school got a Sunday, like, that's not fair. Yeah, that wasn't fair.
But now, did you hear what, did, Chris, tell them...
I know, yeah.
Chris, tell them what our, what our Edgerton PTO Brain Trust decided to do.
Bribe? Did I hear bribe? I heard bribe.
Brain Trust. They were going to split the money, right? So, so no more whining.
Right, stop right there. I'm thinking, sure, we get the weekend one next time. But I think it was a good turnout. I went there, there was a big line, Lori was there. It was a good thing, so lots coming up with concerts and such, and we don't meet again until the 21st of January, so.
Okay, I went to the middle school PTO meeting. It was great, a lot of, a lot of great discussion. You can tell that the people that were there, especially the leadership, were really passionate about supporting and enhancing the experience of the middle school students, whether it's different events or tournaments or whatever, they really want to make sure that they're involved and have a presence there. They talked about some collaboration between the three PTO presidents, the booster club president, and working together to support and promote each other's events, try to avoid double booking, and hopefully keep families involved as they advance, kind of like what Quinn said. They see a fall off after elementary school going into middle school, and then middle school into high school, so working across the board to try to keep those people engaged. They reviewed a lot of important dates for the rest of the school year, and the beginning of next year, discussed concession opportunities. Falcon Fest is going to be on February 29th, and they talked about multiple assemblies that they've had so far this year, and that the speakers, one was from Racine, one was from Greendale or Greenfield? Greendale. And just how the students were engaged and responded to that, it was a really great experience for them. I know, I heard about it when they got home, so that was good. And then, they tried something new during parent-teacher conferences, where you had a food truck, right? And then, how did that, do you want to come up and say how it went? Not to put you on the spot, but, yeah. Yeah, no, I mean, but I know the thought behind it was to try to encourage people to stick around and...
Our teacher, Schultz, she organized in the back for the little kids to write, I mean, coloring things to color them. We had like the, the I am kind sign that was set up for parents and kids to sign or get their picture in, and we have a food truck, so, we were $1,000 over the minimum for a food truck, it might not be as much money, but that lets me know that, like, people at least participated in it, and there was a level of engagement inside of it. We had a handful of families hanging out in cafeteria, we were meeting and talking a little bit after conferences, so.
Another note, I did hear really positive feedbacks that the conferences were kind
of not all at the same time and spread out and people could go, so I did hear a lot of good feedback, I'm happy about the change.
Great. Okay, all right, excellent, thank you. On to E, Referendum Monthly Financial...
Just a quick note, we should be getting our final billing from CG Schmitt sometime in early January. We are wrapping up and reconciling with Bray Architects right now, as they've finished up their work. We have a few things that are outstanding with the flooding issue at the high school in some other particular area. But when that is complete, I would think by the end of January or early February, we should have a final, here's what is left, and we can, rough around $1,000, and we can then engage in conversations about what that will mean, and we'll be referring back to the referendum question, if there are projects that fit within that scope. So, some good timing, I guess, as we discuss further on the, on the cafeteria project as well.
Great. Okay, on to eight, Idols of Future Consideration. Okay, on to nine, Announcements.
Well, I want to thank the Edgerton Elementary School for these lovely invitations. Did somebody make these? These are wonderful.
Yeah. I did.
Oh, do you see them? Oh, here.
Any other announcements?
Oh, well, yeah, because it was not since the last time. Our girls swim and dive team had a tremendous showing at State. We had one and two in diving, Bella, I believe it was, one diving for State, so, and it's just a start, because we had a lot of sophomores and juniors and freshmen, so lots more to come with that. I know girls basketball opened up with a win last week, and I think they play again tomorrow at home, and boys' basketball starts on Saturday, but they don't come to the first home game, I think, until the 10th.
And the Whitnell Rotary Craft Fair at Whitnell High School is Saturday, December 7th, so come out and support that. They raise a lot of money for scholarships and things like that.
Anybody else?
I know, also, on December 7th, I can't remember, I was just told about it, the National Auto Society, our, our kids in the National Auto Society are, are doing something that I, I think it's Christmas-related or holiday-related, so, check the calendars for, for something of the National Auto Society.
Okay. Anybody else?
The holiday tree lighting at Hills Corners on December 7th.
That's...
Okay, in which our holiday band also plays our instruments. So, just wanted to, it's, I think it's at 6 o'clock, if I, if I remember correctly for that, so, the tree lighting that happens there, so.
Yeah, I think that our National Auto Society kids do something about...
Hot cocoa and...
Right.
Two reminders about meetings in December. The second meeting, the 16th, will start at...
The second meeting, the sixteenth, will start at six, Stephen.
Yes, doing it right now.
Okay. The December sixteenth meeting will start at six and we're gonna have to do the same on December ninth. So I want to thank everyone who picked up their book, did the survey and did all that. I really appreciate you and I know Karen, I knew you had rearranged your schedule to get here by six. Thank you. We're not all ready with our surveys for the working session with Joe, so we're gonna postpone that till the ninth, so we'll start at six and then we'll have the working session after that. Again, thank you for moving your schedules around and being here tonight. Sorry that we have to postpone, but we're gonna have to do that till the ninth. Okay, on to meeting debrief. Legislative and advocacy, the board goal and continuous improvement, board goal and progress update. Quinn is gonna talk a little bit more about this, but when we were talking about the board goals, we referenced legislative advocacy as one and continuous improvement process and our role in it as a second. So we've been trying to talk through and think of ways to keep it on our radar and to keep monitoring it each month. And one way we thought of was to potentially add these as separate items on the agenda to recur each month. Quinn, I'll let you take the legislative and advocacy one first.
So through S W S A, we are developing six talking points to our legislators as to a multiple of items. Funding, mostly funding, but there are educate, the teacher shortage is one of them, licensure, I should say, and that was addressed in one of the things that was passed. But, so there are six talking points. We are working usually every other meeting or so to, to come to agreement among of us amongst all the different districts that are there. So that when we do get an audience with a legislator in our district or outside our district, that we are on the same page and we are pushing for the same thing. Now, all, you know, all the districts are different and talking point number two may not really be what we need. So maybe we don't push that one as much as four, five and six, because everybody has a little bit different. But we, I think we've all, at least all the districts that are there, and there's thirty two, thirty three districts that make up the W S A, agree on these major points, whether they affect our district or not. So I had several questions, opinions that I gave to Lisa and Mike and I think Logan are working on them. And so we want to have, I should say, I am asking, do we want to have an information data sheet on our website that explains to residents, legislators, anybody that's coming to our district to look at our stuff? How is our budget made up? What is, where are deficiencies in funding and what do we need, what are these talking points? So that it's a ready-made data sheet and it can be easily updated as the year goes by or as the budget changes, because the budget cycle is every two years. And then do we want to try and get an audience with our legislators? Right now is, is, is downtime as far as they're not really working on the budget. It'll be another, it'll start ramping up, I think, after, early spring.
After elections.
Yeah. And then, and then it really goes strong until, into January or April, in that area timeframe, twenty twenty one, where they have to renew the budget for another two years. So if we are prepared for that, because a lot of legislators, education isn't their forte and they, and they need to be informed, whether they, they need to be informed on issues that pertain to us. And most of the time, it is received well. We had a, we, last time we did this was with Greendale, Greenfield.
It was just our three.
In Greendale. It had to be.
The host tower.
Were you, you were here. So it was within three or four years, right? And they all showed up and, you know, and they had questions for us and we, and we gave them data and it was a good give and take. So we could do it with a consortium like that or we could do it with just our three, four legislators in our district. So, but it's gotta be a board commitment to do it. And I believe there's value in it if, if we want to, just how active do we want to be with legislative piece of it?
So this is a chance to get the conversation started, to get everybody thinking about it. Again, our goal was to come up with a framework for how we want to address and handle the legislative portion, how involved we want to be, what information we want to make available. So what you'll see in the first meeting in December, this will be on here again to discuss again. It's nothing we have to act on, there's nothing pressing, but we just want people to think about it ahead of time so we don't show up in December and everybody's on the spot, what do you think about this, right? So we can give some examples, maybe of data sheets other districts use. We can share that with you to get an idea of what we're talking about and then our hope would be that we have a discussion in.
Did you share the whitefish panel? You did? Did you share that with everybody?
I think I did. It was from S W S A and I forwarded that out there. I have to remember if it was in an S W S A, when I can see, I can't remember, because they usually forward the stuff from S W S A that Terry sends out.
The other thing we can do is we can, prior, we can send out where we have with the six talking points.
Yeah.
They're easily taken off the S W A website. So you guys have a feel for what, what we, what the work we're doing.
So is there an agenda item for the session tonight? Yes. Karen, did you have a question? Okay. Okay, so that's one. On to B, Continuous Improvement. Obviously, this is, we're talking about two tracks here, right? One is the progress of the continuous improvement process as a whole for the district. And the other conversation, the board piece, is what is our role in monitoring it, right? What should we be looking at? The dashboard will come into that as we build that. So our thought is to have a simple agenda item, a heading to be continuous improvement, right? A portion of it'll be reports. It could be Lynn with a report on how something's working out or it could be Mike with a report on how something's working out, right? And then it would dovetail into, this is where the board comes into that. This is our piece of that, right? So we can see what the district's doing and then we know what we're supposed to be doing with it. So again, no, don't want anybody to be alarmed when it comes up at that, but we'll just define that separately so that we can keep a running track of how we're doing with that, make sure we're talking about it and defining what we're gonna be doing, where our role's gonna be. And again, as we go through the year, that's what we use to write the, whether it's a procedure or policy, whatever you end up calling it. But we'll make sure it works instead of just spending a lot of time overspending something and then realizing it doesn't actually apply. So any questions or thoughts on that?
So who would come up with the topic for that? I get the general topic. It could be like.
So part of the training that Joe will provide you is that part of the monitoring is when they're, when we do something called a P D S A or P D C A cycle. So what you heard tonight and Karen's question was very appropriate. What you would do is a short cycle of information and once they've decided that that works, they would come back and report, this is what we tried, we monitored it, it worked, we piloted it, we piloted it again. And it's working across the board. We're gonna institutionalize it across this whole grade level or all the courses or the whole school building or whatever it is. That would be a report. So on any given month, it could be where any part of the strategic plan is ready to do a report. So it was just a whatever we're ready for. We don't know that right now because we don't have all those action plans ready, but it would be a standing item. It would provide an opportunity to say that that was specific to continuous improvement rather than maybe finding it under a different heading and wondering like, what are we even doing with continuous improvement or strategic plan? That it was very specific because it would be under that heading. So in the future, what you saw tonight under that report could be under the report, continuous improvement, so people knew that that was, if the community or the public wants to know like, how are we, you know, what, how is the board getting informed of that or how are you monitoring it? It would just be under that heading rather than maybe under just a generic report section. So I think more of that will become clear when Joe talks about what that looks like and what comes to the board for reports or monitoring or information, because you need to keep informed about it. Some of that'll be at a board meeting, some of it might be just through the dashboard, but that's part of it. Anything that, you know, we want the board to have, it's gotta be on a board agenda, so.
So I just went back like to the October fourteenth agenda, under discussion of future action items. One of the options was continuous improvement, strategic plan, right? So instead of it floating between discussion, future action item, reports or whatever, it'll just always fall under that. Okay? So it is separate heading.
I think so, yeah. Yeah. Just like call it out a little bit.
And again, we want to, we want to make everybody aware of it before the agenda changes and it's on there and say, why, why is this? So I just want to get it out there. And again, this isn't set in stone. If as we go along and realize something else works better, we can adapt and adjust. So at least it's starting. Okay, anybody else, anything for the debrief regarding these two items or anything else? Okay. Take a motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed, non-motion carries. Thank you.